Seeing at six o'clock, we'll go ahead and start our work session for this evening. And I guess Jeff will call the roll.
That's where Pete told here. Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
I'm here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
And Mayor Polian.
Here. Two items on our work session agenda this evening, we're going to do a review of our comprehensive plan for future steps. For council to hear information on, and then we'll be discussing coronavirus relief funds. Per normal, I'll just kind of do a quick review of our meeting this evening. That doesn't have a lot on it. And then if there's any questions going into this evening, feel free to ask away at staff so they can be prepared. Consent agenda, we just have our city council meeting minutes as well as a transit vehicle purchase for us to authorize. Is there any questions for staff on that before we go into it this evening? Okay, seen none. Then under new business, we have our CMGC contract for the collection system rehabilitation project to authorize. Is there any questions on that before we go into that tonight? Great. From there, we will have our city manager report, we'll go into our council and committee reports. And then we'll adjourn, but then remember immediately afterwards, we have an executive session this evening for us. With that, let's go ahead and jump in this evening's work session on the comprehensive plan, future steps. Jordan, is that you that's starting us off there?
Yeah, and I'll just introduce Kelly, who's going to walk through the comprehensive plan next steps. This is really to start the conversation with the council about this goal to start the update of our comprehensive plan. And sort of the scope of that work and starting the conversation of how big we go in in our update of a comprehensive plan. How long that sort of takes, the type of resources that the city will need to conduct an update. And so I think Kelly's laid out sort of the background on a comp plan update. And then some, some conversation starter questions about how to get this going. And things to look forward to through our budget process and goal setting too. So I think Kelly has just a brief, some slides and brief presentation, but I think the report covered it pretty thoroughly.
Yeah, thanks, Jordan. So yeah, the report covered it pretty thoroughly. I had our last intern that just got a job with 3J Consulting in Beaverton, she did a lot of this work, I will credit her with it. And she did a lot of research with the city of Milwaukee and city of Oregon city to see how they've done them because they're both Clackamas County. Our cities in Clackamas County, and they recently just went through the process. She also did quite a bit of research. Looking at different grant options and really the most applicable grant option out there is a technical assistant grant award through the state of Oregon. Unfortunately, that grant award only gives us about sixty to seventy thousand dollars in grant money, but I mean, it's better than nothing. Historically speaking, when there was periodic review in the state of Oregon, which is the process that you used to have to go through to update your comp plan. There was a lot more grant funding available for comprehensive plans, but since the state of Oregon's not requiring cities to update their comp plan. I think they only required like the five major metro areas to update them on a timeline. There's just not a lot of grant funding available any longer. So if anybody knows of any grant funding, please send it my way. The only one we could really find is the TA grant, which she included information on the grant wordies for two thousand fifteen and seventeen. And two thousand nineteen and twenty-one, they only do the grand ward every other, every two years. So that's why we had to wait until the end of twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one to apply if we're interested in it. So I'll just, I'll just go through a very brief slideshow as Jordan talked about. It should only take a couple of minutes. Whoops. Let me share my screen here. Everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I only have like five or six slides. So I have a couple of slides on why we should complete an update to the comprehensive plan. As you know, because you set the council goal, it's currently a council goal to look into initiating an update to the comprehensive plan. And to start reviewing options and approving and implementation strategies. So that's kind of where we're at at this point is kind of looking at, how do we go forward? We, we all are aware and all agree, I believe, that we need to do an update to the comp plan. So the first step, I think, what you accomplished as a council was to kind of set this as our priority going into the next biennium. Another big reason that we're all aware of as well is the population increase that's happened in Sandy. The last comprehensive plan was created in nineteen ninety-seven, it was called the City of Sandy twenty forty plan. So it looked out forty-three years to two thousand forty. We're now a little bit over halfway there to two thousand forty. And since nineteen ninety-seven, the population has went from about five thousand people to now about twelve thousand people. So we've had rapid population growth. We've also, I believe, had three or four UGB expansions since then. The two big ones happening right after nineteen ninety-seven with the Bornsted Village area. And then also just in two thousand seventeen, we increased the UGB by about square mile, so about six hundred acres. So the timeline of the comprehensive plan that I've kind of laid out, and obviously this is fluid, it could change. But it kind of just kind of looks at from nineteen ninety-seven on, in nineteen ninety-seven, we adopted the existing one. We hadn't really done a lot, we hadn't really re-reviewed it that I'm aware of, not since at least two thousand eleven, when I started with the city of Sandy. And then in two thousand nineteen, the city council, you folks, established the new goal to revise the comprehensive plan. So that's kind of the first step that I'm aware of since nineteen ninety-seven. On saying, let's get moving forward on a new comp plan and revising what we currently have. So in early two thousand twenty-one, and I'm sure Jordan's going to have a lot more discussions with council, but as part of goal setting, we would like to look at. Kind of the scope of what we want to accomplish, how big of a public outreach technique or strategy we want to use. How many stakeholders we want to reach out to, and that will kind of drive how big of a comp plan update we do. That will also kind of drive and make the major factor on how much money we have to spend in order to accomplish the comp plan. So in our research, communities that have done less public outreach, the comp plans are about two hundred thousand dollars. And cities where they do a lot of public outreach, like the city of Milwaukee, it can go upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because the amount of outreach that the city of Milwaukee did, you have to hire a consultant firm. Just because we don't have the staff to be able to handle that amount of outreach. October two thousand twenty-one, if we decide to go forward with the technical assistance grant, that's when we would apply for that through DLCD. We'd probably be awarded that grant a couple of months afterwards, hopefully, and then we had to hire a consultant, most likely in early two thousand twenty-two. And then the process takes anywhere from two to three years. Again, that is totally depending on kind of the goals and the strategies that you set forth in early two thousand twenty-one. That will drive how long the comp plan update takes. So if we want a very exhaustive look at everything in the city of Sandy and a very robust public outreach process. I've been told we're probably looking at more of a three-year comp plan update period. And if we're kind of doing more of a stripped down one, then we're looking at more of a two-year period. So the anticipated costs, which I've already talked about a little bit, it's anywhere from about two hundred to three fifty. This size of city, we didn't see any examples of less than about two hundred thousand dollars. Even cities that used a lot of internal staff, which there's not many out there, but a few cities that have used more staff. They still have paid consultants upwards of two hundred thousand to assist staff. Because as you can imagine, staff, I've only participated in one comp plan update with the city of Coburg, and that was fourteen years ago. Most planners only participate a few of these in their career. So staff members that you typically hire, especially in a smaller city like Sandy, they're not, their expertise is not in comp plan rights. And comp plan outreach. So that's why a lot of cities hire a consultant firm. The DLCD technical assistance grant in the last five-year period, the largest grant they've awarded is seventy thousand dollars. So again, not a ton of money. So the out-of-pocket for the city of Sandy that I just want everybody to start being aware of and thinking about. Is probably somewhere in the range of a hundred and thirty thousand to two hundred and eighty thousand. That would not include any staff time that we would budget for. But that would be money that we would most likely need to spend on a consultant firm to assist staff. And council and the stakeholders in the community.
Yeah, so quick question, this may be for you too, Jordan, is as I'm thinking about these figures and comparing it to the timeline that Kelly kind of proposes in front of us. I mean, that goes through several different budget cycles. So while we're looking at a hundred thirty to two hundred and eighty thousand, I mean, there's some that can be absorbed into this budget. And then some that can be absorbed into the next budget as well. I mean, and obviously matched with any kind of grant funds we can get, correct?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so this is the total project cost, which if you have a two to three-year long process, it's going to span across at least a biennium, if not two bienniums. And you know, it could be broken up too in terms of the type of consultant work or expenses that we would have. Say for like example, on the first year, some of the research that Kelly did, looking at some of the cities have done recent updates. They've taken on the visioning process with a lot of the public engagement during that first year to set the vision and goals for the community. And that takes actually a lot of work of forming a citizen or a community advisory committee. You usually have, you know, not two hundred thousand dollars worth, but somewhere fifty to a hundred thousand dollars worth of consultants doing. A lot of the public engagement work facilitating, putting together the websites and taking the minutes of the meetings and bringing those groups together. To have that conversation and help write those goals and that vision statement. And then you roll into more of the technical work. And then that's also where you typically just add capacity for staff, but also the level of expertise and technical assistance that you need. To write these, you know, comprehensive plan goals and language and zoning updates and all that. You bring on another, you know, consultant firm that maybe can help with that. Or there's firms out there that do the whole package that you start with upfront for two or three years, and you just have that relationship throughout the update. It's a long-winded answer, so yeah, it's not just, you know, pay two hundred thousand dollars upfront.
And then on the envisioning portion of this, now Ford Family Foundation comes in and helps smaller rural communities with visioning type projects. Is this something that could possibly fall under their scope? Or because it's tied so directly into a comp plan, would this kind of be outside of what they look to get involved in?
It's a good question. I haven't looked into that, but we can definitely research.
Y'all write it down.
So if we've done a number of the UGB expansions and made some other zone changes. Does some of that help towards the work that we have to do? So we've done maybe a few steps in the process?
Kind of. Yeah, so that's a really good point. So part of a comp plan would typically be an economic opportunities analysis and a. And a buildable lands analysis and a housing analysis. We did do all that in two thousand fifteen. And it's, I think it's still pretty accurate. The problem is, is that with passing of House Bill two thousand three, we're going to have to do most of that work again by two thousand twenty-four. So they're making us now do it every eight years. Which for a smaller city like Sandy, that's pretty burdensome actually, to be doing that every eight years. So I, I guess the answer is yes and no. Yes, being that we do have a good template, and I just went through the process five years ago. So I'm pretty aware of how to do the process. So I think some of that, we can save money on not hiring consultants since staff did it last time. But unfortunately, we're going to have to do a lot of that work again, but in the next three or four years.
I'm assuming that's an unfunded mandate, the eight years.
You, yes, you can't, there is separate pool of grant money that you can apply for to receive assistance with that though. That is above and beyond the DLCD technical assistance grant. At least there is right now. When they just started House Bill two thousand three, they released like a couple million dollars in assistance. Now, by the time we have to do it in one or two years or three years, I don't know if that money will still be there, but I'm hoping it will be.
The question I had, Kelly, and you may not know this, back in nineteen ninety-seven when we adopted it. I guess it started, you know, a couple of years prior to that. Did we do that in-house as a staff, or did we hire that out? If you know that, I don't know. I know that's kind of the beginning of Scott Lazenby's era, so he may have wanted to do it in-house. But I'm sure the rules and laws were all a little bit. Different as well during that timeframe, just curiosity. And how much if, if you know if we did hire that out, just to give our perspective.
It's a good question. I think, I think looking at the old comp plan, we did hire. A consultant, but I'm not sure what the split was, like how much did staff do and how much did the consultant do? The other interesting thing, if you look at nineteen ninety-seven, that is when I believe we updated the Parks Master Plan. The Transportation Systems Plan was around that year, maybe the year after. And then I believe one, if not multiple of the utility master plans were done around that same time, within a year or two of that. So it's kind of similar to now in that we're doing a ton of long-range planning and forecasting in multiple departments. I do think a consultant was involved, but it is a good question, Jeremy. I'm not sure how much.
I know there was a lot of outreach because I came up, I had recently graduated from college and remember seeing that in city hall. And just thought how cool it was to be planning. I never knew planning existed at that time and maybe taken a different career path if I had known. But anyways, I guess that kind of started my lead into me on the planning commission later on and a few years down the road. But yeah, so I know they did some outreach back then, and it was called the twenty forty plan, correct? And then I, what I recall is why we haven't done one of these prior was that you were supposed to go out every twenty years. Is what I was told to update that, that forty-year plan, so.
Yeah, a lot of cities, a lot of cities do them every twenty years. I will say, I think Sandy, like Happy Valley is a little unique in that because of the population growth that happens so rapidly. I would be interested to find out what the city would recommend for how often you're supposed to do them if you're growing as fast as Sandy is.
And I recall in that first one, it was saying that we were going to be a lot bigger, and we were going to be growing a lot faster than we actually have. So we've actually grown a lot slower compared to what the studies of that have been. They talked about having a community college campus and three high schools in the town, so.
Yeah, actually, that's, if you'll bear with me, that's a great.
Oh, sorry.
That's a perfect transition because I was going to pull up what the existing comp plan shows. So if you, if you look at the existing comp plan, the written text, I think you guys will find, and I'm sure you've all read it. But if you look at it very closely, you'll find that I think a lot of the policies and goals will be very similar to what we're actually still wanting to achieve. I think the main difference is going to be kind of the implementation strategy. And when I say the implementation strategy, I'm kind of thinking, is the map realistic, which I don't think it is? And is the code written in such a way right now, the development code, that we implement the comp plan? So I think that's going to be kind of the big questions is the goals and policies, I think even from nineteen ninety-seven are fantastic for the most part. If you look at our comp plan, I think it's really the map and then how that, how the goals and policies are achieved through the development code. Through development regulation. So I think that's going to be kind of the big question is. And I think that's where a consultant will be very handy, is how do we make sure that whatever we envision in two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four. Is carried out through the development code regulations?
Can you, can you show me where the, the golf course goes?
It's north by Kelso. You see that little flag?
Oh, there it is. Okay, all right, cool.
Yeah, I'm a golfer too. I wish that would have went in. That's like. Yeah, so if you, if you can see, I mean, there's, I think there's some things that we're very optimistic on here, and I, I think we should try to avoid in the future. If you can see the icons, they got very aggressive with the number of schools. You know, a community college, golf courses, these are things that I'm not saying aren't great things, but I don't, if I, when I look at a lot of comp plans, they're not really put on there anymore. The comp plan doesn't have anything to do with dictating to the school district where they're going to locate their schools. So it's kind of something that I probably wouldn't advise putting on a map like this. And in all honesty, in my ten years working at the city of Sandy, it's caused more trouble than it's been. So I've gotten a lot of calls over the years from prospective property owners that say, oh, I looked at this map. Are you guys planning a school there? You know, I'm looking to buy it. And it's like, no, there's no school being planned on your property, so.
Right, and I've also you, I've seen it used as a reason to throw out the plan too, right? Where people are like, oh, that plan had a community college on there, and because it was on there, people think you should just throw it out the window. When, you know, really, it, that doesn't mean much about the quality of the plan.
I agree a hundred percent, yes.
Yeah.
You know, and then the other interesting thing will be, since I think it's actually timed really well, a lot of cities do their comp plan first and then their other plans. I think how we're doing it is actually better in some ways. Because some things like how the transportation network and how the parks network set up. Really is influenced more through those individual master plans. So by the time we update this comp plan, we will have had a recently revised parks master plan and a recently revised transportation system plan. With a lot of public input on both, and then we can make those changes reflective on the new comp plan map. But I think it'll actually be kind of a nice timing piece.
Have to do something special for House Bill two oh one, or is just overlay over existing zones?
Can you explain that a little bit further, Jim?
Oh, House Bill two thousand one for multiple housing on residential lots. Does that require some special zoning, or is it just overlay over an existing zone?
From my understanding, it would just be changing our existing development code. I, I have not heard anything from. The state that would say that the comp plan has to be modified to reflect House Bill two thousand one. But that's a good question, and we'll make sure during this process that we include the state housing folks. To make sure that we're not doing anything that violates House Bill two thousand one through the revision of the comp plan.
Thanks.
Yeah, so I mean, it's an interesting map, it's kind of a. I think there's some things on here that are really ambitious. I think there's some things though that are going to come to fruition. So overall, I think it was done pretty well. I just think some of the icons got a little aggressive. And then my last slide was really just kind of next steps. So I think, I think some of the next steps and Jordan, I think would be really good to hear from here. But I think it's really setting a time for a deeper dive into the discussion on how big of a process we want to. We want to take on what the, what a realistic budget for that process would be. And kind of what the council envisions for public outreach efforts. Jordan, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, I think I. Kind of previewed a little bit of what I was thinking. I mean, I think it would be good to have that community conversation about, you know, the, the vision. And setting those goals up front before we go into any of the technical work. And that also helps kind of like create the, you know, public outreach framework where you get people involved. And you know, you have a pretty good sized community advisory or citizen advisory committee. And I think that just gives you a running start, but also allows the community to kind of come together during that first year and talk about it. Because really, two years of technical work is, is a lot, you know, writing all these policy statements and, you know. Analyzing zone and housing needs and all that. But if you're doing a lot of the outreach upfront, you kind of build that momentum. And instead of like, hey, we're going to do a comp plan, and then it's like, kind of trickles through it. I, I think it's also just something more affordable too. If you're going to break this thing up into chunks. You know, doing this public engagement work upfront and then bringing on more, the more expensive technical assistance might be better. And then on top of that, you know, Kelly mentioned the plans that we're currently working on. And I think just from a workload standpoint, I think he's right, we want to complete these plans. Because there is staff time that will go into all this, a lot of staff time and council time too. That we get those things well underway before we kick off a pretty heavy, you know, plan update. The demands a lot of staff work. So I think talking about this at city council goals, the goal setting with a couple of new counselors. And then that allows us to kind of set the budget for the next biennium. And even maybe by then, we'll have a little better peek at what we might have available resources to start getting more of a running start during the new year.
Thank you, Jordan. Again, let Counselor Pete Sol start us off.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, looking at this timeline is, you know, the next four or five years really. And with our growth and knowing, you know, the planning department has been busy, it's going to continue to be busy. And how much staff time it takes and how some of these things have taken a lot longer because they're busy doing other things. I mean, is this something that we should maybe be trying to adjust to have, like maybe hiring a full-time person? As well as contracting out to help guide all that stuff? Because, so we can do this right, and then in five years, we're going to be that much bigger. Obviously, the SDCs and other things, I'm assuming could pay for that as well that come in. But then through that process, you know, we're able to have five years and then, you know. Have the funding would be coming in as well in that timeframe, either keep that person on or have a temporary for, you know, four or five years. Position to help out with this process. Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, yeah, if we could have it all, for sure. Be great to have a staff person working on this full-time. I think we'll, we'll take a closer look at just how we accomplish this goal in this update and what the different tracks are. We'll, we'll also talk to the other cities some more. I think we interviewed a couple about how they did it. But having somebody, you know, spearhead it would be great. I just don't know if the budget can hold that.
Because it, it's not just this plan, it was all the three or four other plans at the same time, wanting to do that, right? That's just a monstrous lift to do it and to do it right. So someone's got to be coordinating it as well, doing all the other duties that they're doing today. So just something to think about as we go forward.
Yeah, I do, I do, I think it's a great thing to think about. I do remember in our discussions with a few other cities. Like I said, our intern at the time was the one doing most of the outreach, but I did talk to some people and overheard some stuff as well. There are some cities that have decided to do, like hire a, what would you call it? A, a limited duration planning position. And I do know a few cities have also done it through, like Portland State or the University of Oregon. To do it through like a student group, so that's one alternative. I don't know, doing it that way, you're not going to get the expertise of somebody that's done a lot of long-range planning before. But then you could at least have somebody that's kind of a. A contact for the public and for the consultant to kind of organize and go through.
Great. Well, we'll thank, oh, go ahead, Counselor Lee.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm aware of a couple of cities who used a retired professional from a city to come in and help for a couple of years. And that turned out pretty well.
Good idea. And so just to kind of close out the conversation and move on to our next one, I just think, wanted to thank staff for putting together the update. Jeremy mentioned going through it a little bit in the nineties. I myself did as well. It's, it's one reason I'm such a big proponent of moving ahead on this is I was one of those that was involved in the engagement process. And got really bought in and was part of the folks coming up with ideas of community colleges and golf courses and everything else. But it really, it engages the public into the envisioning processes to where we want to go as a community. And like a mission statement, a vision as to where you want to go helps lead you to the, the little decisions that you make along the way. And it brings your community along with you and, and it allows them to take part in that visioning. So I'm very excited about this, looking forward to early part of next year, talking about what it's going to look like. I, I tend to believe that we're probably going to lean towards more visioning and engagement early on than not. Just because it's been so long and how quickly we're growing and some of the consternation and stuff you see out. In discussions and social media and other places is I think people in our community really want to get involved in the future of our community. And so this will be a good way to, to engage them and get them to do that. So good, looking forward to more discussions on this. And with that, let's go ahead and move ahead to the coronavirus relief fund. Jordan.
Thank you. So Tyler's going to give the overview. He wrote up the staff report, he's been doing the research on this. He also has probably access via his brilliant mind of the numbers on what we have and how, what's remaining. For the relief funds that we've been allocated by the state. But really, given the timeline, I kind of previewed this at the previous council meeting. You know, it'd be good to formulate these programs now so we can draft up the criteria. And if we go the route of additional rounds of grants especially, we want to make sure that we give enough time. To put that together, review applications and get the money out the door before the end of the year. And get the money out the door before the end of the year. So there's a couple of different options that we kind of just listed that we wanted to have a conversation with the council about. And I'll let Tyler go through those. But most of those we've already kind of mentioned with you. And I think the purpose of tonight is to get your input on the direction that we should be going on these programs. To bring back something formal at the next meeting for you guys to adopt. So Tyler, take her away.
All right. Good evening, Council. So we received or were allocated rather about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in coronavirus relief funds. To be used towards, you know, mitigating the impact of COVID nineteen in our community. Today, we've spent about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of those funds. And I expect we'll need another twenty thousand or so sort of set aside for the remainder of this calendar year. Some of that is for sure going to be used in, you know, helping to deliver meals to. Meals on Wheels residents that we're, you know, currently working on, purchasing more personal protective equipment and items like that. And then also setting aside a couple thousand dollars. For the event that we have another exposure to COVID nineteen and need to sanitize some buildings. That's about three thousand dollars per building. If we run into a scenario like that. And so taking that into account, that leaves about a hundred thousand dollars or so of funds that we have not allocated or. Decided on an intended use yet. And so looking at that and what we've done previously, there's a few different options that we have to sort of. Allocate those funds out to the community and help make a positive impact. The first and likely the easiest would be continuing the small business grants that were offered back in. Was that May of this year? If we extended that program, we could do something very similar with three thousand dollar grants or look at a different option. As far as, you know, less money to impact more businesses or more money but impact less businesses. There's also the opportunity to look at grants for landlords who have been impacted by COVID nineteen. So specifically, you know, landlords of duplexes or apartment complexes who have tenants that are not currently able to pay their rent. We all know that there's a moratorium on evictions and so there's some landlords that are experiencing some financial hardships with no money coming in. But still, you know, mortgage payments and utility expenses and things like that going out. And then lastly, looking at an option of providing utility grants. Or grants rather to pay utility payments for not just Sandy utility customers, but any utility. One of the main, one of the big caveats rather of the CRF agreement that we have is that it can't be used for revenue replacement. So we couldn't just directly, you know, cut ourselves a check to pay for past utility accounts. But we could offer a grant program to citizens who have been negatively impacted by COVID, either reduced hours, loss of work. Required to quarantine because they were either exposed to the virus or. Got the virus and therefore out of work. If we did something like that, we would have to open it up to all the utilities that they currently have outstanding. So that could include PGE, Northwest Natural, Hoodview. Most people, you know, obviously subscribe to our Sandy Net service, but there may be some wave customers or something like that out there. That's a little, yes, Mayor.
Could the grant be the size of like the average debt load per utility rate payer?
Great question. So if we go this route. I think it's definitely a conversation needs to be had about reinstating our shut-off practices. As you all know, we ceased utility shut-offs for non-payment back in March. We have not been charging late fees. We've been working with customers to do payment plans, but we still are seeing quite a large number of past due bills at this point in time. We could offer grants, you know, rounded to the nearest hundred dollar, for example. Right now, our average past due utility account is five hundred and two dollars and fifty-two cents. So we could look at, you know, a five hundred dollar grant for utility purposes. I think the second component to that is then having the conversation about. Reinstating our shut-offs or at the very least reinstating some form of that with, you know, mandatory. Payment of utility accounts that are X number of months past due or something. What I would hate to see is that we institute a program like this and. Various other utilities get paid and we don't. And obviously, this can't be revenue replacement, so we can't make it contingent. That they're going to pay their Sandy utility account, but we'd obviously want to encourage that that is one of the options or. You know, sources or places that they should be making a payment to. That would require obviously a little bit more work as far as developing a program from scratch, what type of criteria we're going to use. There are some other cities that have done this. Hillsborough comes to mind. Right off the bat, they have a utility assistance program currently. Although it looks like that's also sort of managed through a community action organization within their community. So if this is a route that the council would like to take, I'd like to reach out to some of our local nonprofits that we have in Sandy. To see if we could partner with them for a quickly developed program to perhaps remove ourselves from the actual administration of the program. That may or may not happen, in which case, you know, we'll just develop a program and make it work. But if there's a way to partner with someone else that actually administers and reviews the applications, I think that. Having us one more step removed makes the argument that this isn't revenue replacement that much stronger. If you had, I'd love to open it up for questions or suggestions from the council. I can go into more, you know, detail. Regarding utility accounts, if you'd like to discuss that. We do have additional work to do to find out or gather information about the landlord and. Rent issue that we expect is a problem, but don't have, you know, official numbers on what that looks like, given that we don't manage those types of. Contracts for our local landlords. But if that's an avenue that the council would like to discuss, we can absolutely do some more outreach and figure out what the need is in that category as well.
We'll go Counselor Lee, then Pete Sol, then Schultz. Smallwood, did you have your, all right, then Smallwood rounded out.
You mentioned rental assistance for. I guess apartment buildings, those kind of things. But what about business? I think, aren't there also some business owners who rent who may have some problems?
Absolutely. And so that could be piggybacked off of another small business grant program. One thing I didn't mention, forgive me while I jump back quickly, is that we could do a hybrid of all three of these or two of these options as well. So, you know, looking at the business side of things, we could do a program more geared towards businesses that don't own the brick and mortar shop they're in. But rather are renters to help offset some of those costs as well. But absolutely, they could be included in one or more of those programs that we're looking at.
Thank you. Then I think I went to Pete Sol.
Yeah, just a question on, I don't know how Hillsborough did it. I know they're using a nonprofit. But how do you, I guess, make sure that if you have a program for utilities to help pay for the utilities or pay for. The landlord payments, how do you make sure that it's being applied towards utilities and not just being applied to. Other things that in the bank, you know, like when the last go around, we did this for small businesses. We know people are hurting and we're just like, you can spend it on anything in your business. We aren't doing that. But how do we give you a check and then make sure that you used it on that and not your new car?
Great question. So two answers. The first is that we could do an honor system type program where we just cut the check to the individual. And hope that they use it for the intended purpose. We'd obviously be collecting information from them upfront, proving that they have been impacted by COVID, whether that's, you know, unemployment. Paperwork or a termination or furlough notice from their employer or something to that effect. Along with, you know, documentation that shows they're currently past due and then hope that they do the right thing and pay that that past due bill. We could also, in lieu of that option. Gather the past due bill that they're wanting to pay. And I need to do a little more research before I. Give myself a hundred percent of the support on this next comment. So just keep that in the back of your mind. But then we could gather those past due bills and kind of check directly to the utility company. My only concern there is what that means technically speaking for revenue replacement if they were paying a Sandy past due bill. And so I want to get some legal advice on that component of it. But as far as the utility companies that are not the city of Sandy, that would be an option.
Okay, Counselor Schultz.
That is one benefit, if I can jump in quickly, Mayor. One benefit of having another organization do the middleman work, so to speak. They could, you know, compile a list of accounts that need to be paid at various utility agencies and then cut the check. And then it's not the city of Sandy. Possibly cutting a check to themselves in that regard.
I just, I just worry Tyler. I look forward to that outreach and in any way I can help you, I'd love to, because I agree with you. I just knowing some of the issues we face with the utility assistance program with wastewater. Might not be the easiest conversation to have, but let's do it. Let's try to make it happen. Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, Jeremy actually asked my question. And I guess to follow up with that, it's, it makes me a little nervous too. I don't see how, I don't think that we can be. The body that cuts the check if it's for our utilities without, I just, I feel like that's gonna get really dicey really quick. And I worry about the amount of time we have this, you know, we're at the end of the year. So I'm wondering if we need to kind of, I love the idea of the utility assistance and if we can partner with someone that can do it quickly, like, I love the idea. I'm just nervous about taking on some brand new program without much time left. If we should focus more on the business that we've already, the business grants we've already done, I don't know. Or maybe a hybrid of the two, but I definitely think we need a middleman. I don't think it can be us that's doing that.
Well, to that, to that point, Counselor, not to jump in front of you, Counselor Smallwood, but I mean, that is, that's the issue. But I mean, that's the issue, right? Is all the organizations that would partner with us in town are like one executive director. That's just, I mean, you know, four or five different things that also doesn't have time to bring on, you know, a program of this extent. Yeah, so it is something we're thinking about that you, as much as we want to do the utility assistance program. We may not have the bandwidth or the ability to do it. And when do we have to have a program? When do we got to spend this money by? By the new year, correct?
Correct. So we need to expend these funds before December thirtieth. If we want to be reimbursed for them. Of course, if the council determines they want to institute a program and not seek reimbursement, that's a whole different story. But if we're looking to use that remaining hundred thousand dollars of CRF funds, then it needs to be spent by December thirtieth. Of course, you know, that could change on December twenty-ninth if there's. An addendum or amendment to the current. Legislation that's in place, but I would hate to wait that long and then, you know, use it or lose it at the last hour. The one thing I would add to Counselor Schultz's question. I think it's, it's difficult to develop a new program. Yes, we don't want to necessarily rely completely on the honor system. However, if we reinstated. Reinstated our policy of shutting off past due accounts, that's in my view, sort of the. The support that we need to make sure it's getting used for the intended purpose, right? Because if you're experiencing a hardship due to COVID nineteen and you meet all the criteria and you get a grant. And you also haven't paid your utility bill with Sandy and now we're doing shut-offs. You're gonna be in a position where you're gonna have to come up with the past due amount to pay your bill now. It's not a perfect plan by any means, but it is sort of the one sort of safety net to that program that we, there'd be some give and take in that regard. So just for what that's worth.
Counselor Smallwood, you're out of the batter's box. You're up.
So while I love the idea of utility relief, because that's a huge burden for a lot of people. Because it's COVID relief funds for the city, I would really rather see that money used for the city. So whether that go back to into businesses or to renters relief or landlord relief. I'd rather utilize that that option and look at other options to maybe help with utility bills down the road.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Yes, I read someplace, I think in the newspaper, that you can pay rents in December for January under these funds. Have you seen that, Tyler?
You know, I, I remember reading an article very similar to that. I'm having trouble off the top of my head remembering which agency was providing those grants and what other criteria were involved. But I can absolutely do some research and bring that back.
Counselor Exner.
Yeah, we got a hundred grand left over and I'm trying to think myself how much is gonna be effective on what we're expending at. You figured Tyler said five hundred bucks was the average. Short of what's going on with people who are needing to pay back. That's only about two hundred people. I don't know what your numbers are that are with, but I can put gas and electricity and water bills and all the rest. On the other hand, I really like the idea of helping out people. This is where the money comes from. It's a taxed. Item that came from all those property taxes and personal taxes. And I think we need to put it into the peoples. I don't know how we'd spread it out across the twelve thousand for a hundred. Hundred thousand dollars, but I think we got to put it on to people or businesses. And on the other hand, and the last thing for this, not on the other hand, the last thing is, is if we're talking about rent, you're talking a thousand dollars. Per month of not payments. That could certainly run into a lot of money pretty quickly and it'll go through that hundred thousand dollars pretty fast. So Tyler, I mean, the question I had was is. Do we see a lot of people going to non-payments right away? Or did they just kind of dribble in and they didn't really happen until the last month or two? That kind of gives me an idea about how we think about how people are behind.
So that's a lengthy answer. I'll try to summarize it quickly. We have, and I can actually do this right now while I'm on the, on the fly. There have been a handful of accounts that just since COVID hit. Have not made payments. Again, we don't know if that's related to specifically a COVID nineteen. Impact or if that's just, they're not doing shut-off, so I can extend this out.
And that's what bothers me about some of this is there are a lot of folks that are in need and that we really need to help. But there are also some folks that heard, I don't need to make any utility payments anymore and decided not to.
On the other hand, Mayor, those are not forgiven. They're just not being shut off. So those numbers are gonna add up, keep adding up. And as a whole property manager, you get two or three months behind on anything that you can't make payments on. And the chances that person being able to pay him back at some future date get pretty small. Those people are gonna be, you know, how you gonna pay that back if you haven't been able to make those payments? That's kind of the reason why I asked Tyler about how late that was. If those are people just shut them off and decided we're not gonna pay. Because we're not gonna have to be taken account for it. That's one person trying to take advantage of the system. And if somebody paid them until they just couldn't pay payments anymore and they had just failed after three, four months, that's a different story for me.
Yeah, I have the list pulled up in front of me. If I had to, I'm not gonna count these individually right now. The two hundred and twenty-eight significantly passed due accounts, it looks like probably off the cuff forty or fifty of them. Forty of them are probably. Date back to the April timeframe. So it's not an insignificant amount of accounts. But again, that's where the, the, getting confirmation, whether that's the unemployment paperwork or the. Pink slip, so to, so to speak, or something like that, proving that they've actually been negatively impacted is going to really come in handy. It wouldn't just be, okay, you're, you're past due, here's a check. It would be contingent upon really proving. The negative impact of COVID nineteen within your life.
Part of this does feel like the only, like the carrot and the stick to get the program back going, back up again. Because we, we got it. I mean, at some point, we've got to restart, you know, start this thing back up.
That's gonna be another workshop item in the future, whether that's discussed ad nauseam tonight or whether that's something that gets brought up in, you know, a month or two. We will need to have a discussion at some point related to how we move forward. And I can think of a number of different, you know, ways we can do that, but. It was, I believe, a council decision to suspend those shut-offs. And so we're gonna. it was a, I believe a council decision to suspend those um shut offs, and so we're gonna need a little bit of discussion related to what's next in regards to that at some point. And I don't want to rush that conversation, you know, I fully understand that people are still significantly impacted within this pandemic and um there hasn't been a lot of relief, uh you know, at a federal level for um you know, the individual homeowner or renter within our community, so I, I'm not trying to jump the gun on that conversation at all, but just planning to see that it is something that needs to be talked about at some point in the near future.
Councillor Peachill.
Are any of those places that haven't paid, like a apartment complex or something like that, I don't need names or anything, but my point on that one is, it's not an individual, it's like multiple people, because I know uh several multifamily dwelling units may have one water service that they split up amongst their tenants. You know, them, because, you know, they've been affected because people haven't been paying their rents, you know, not paying that, and then they have this very large uh bill as well that they're having a hard time paying.
I don't recall seeing any apartment complexes on the list. There may be some duplex or triplex owners, because most of those accounts are within an individual's name, typically the property owner, and not uh an organization's name like an apartment complex would be. So I don't have it broken down to that uh micro level as far as uh multifamily residents go, but that's something that we can uh pull together uh later this week and bring back to council at the next meeting.
Okay, it was just a thought. Um on the last thing is, during our economic development meeting that we had here a week ago, you know, um we heard several people who are the COVID has affected their business and they haven't been able to pay their mortgage or their rent in that, and there's only a short timeframe before after so many months of not being able to do that, that they're just aren't viable businesses anymore that will go out of business and it most likely won't ever come back because of, you know, that stain on their, their business. The, who they are, they're, you know, the bank and everybody else, you can get that bigger picture. Um you know, some really key anchors in our community as well um that, you know, could hang on for five, six months, but as this has gone on longer, they're they're really struggling on that rent, at least payment, so maybe that might be the easier. I don't say any of this is easier, but um something that could definitely have a, a direct effect. Maybe not as politicized as the um trying to figure out whether it's a utility or not.
Uh do you have a response, Tyler, and then I see councillor Exner with his hand up?
Um not quite a response, but just one more item to keep in mind. Our current ordinance states that utility balances stay with the property, so in the event that someone's you know, selling their home or moving out of their rented apartment or, or uh duplex, that amount does not, you know, follow that person um and then go to collections or anything like that. It's recorded as a lien on the property. So while it might take a number of months or years to recoup some of these past due balances, given, you know, whatever individual scenario there is, the city will get this money ninety-nine percent of the time because it's recorded as a lien on the property, so I, I'm not saying that to sway any conversation or anything like that, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware that um you know, we don't go through a, a typical like collection process like a, a larger, you know, a Comcast, for example, when I get internet at my home, I'm giving them social security number and, you know, that type of thing. Everything within Sandy is reported as a lien on the property, so there is some, some added security in that regard.
Councillor Exner.
Yeah, just to, just to comment on Tyler's note about being reimbursed. Sometimes those numbers, those liens can be pretty big. I, it's a couple of my sales, I spent a few thousand dollars. People get way behind before the city decides that's it. We can't, or the utility company says we can't allow this to keep on going, and my guess is that if we are in this forgiveness period, there could very well be some pretty big numbers, and those might be some numbers that might take some of those closings very un- un-provisionable or un-uncomfortable for people who are selling, or at least make them think twice about selling and whatever might happen with that would be difficult to figure out. Uh secondly, um I would hesitate to put a lot of money into either businesses or people who are, are, how do I say this? Probably not going to make it through anyway, so why would we want to put a lot of money into places that are not going to be reasonably responsive to this one, and I think that's something we want to look at. I know we did some of that, we did some of the business uh grants here a few months back, but I think that's really important to keep that in mind.
But that's for, not sorry to interrupt, but to me, that's for the, the committee, right, to the-
Right, right.
For us, so for us, it's like where, for this board or this, this council, you know, it's where do we want to allocate those funds? And then we'll allow whatever committee or, or staff work group or whatever to figure out the correct process to do it. So as we're kind of going through these, because we're starting to come to the end of the hour here, is, you know, we've got small business interruption grants, continuing those. We've got these grants to landlords, but I, I do feel like the small business interruption grants, if done correctly, ciphered through correctly, would affect the other, right? And then grants to community members who have been impacted by COVID nineteen towards our utility bills, which we've talked excessively about. It's feeling to me like doing this, we're, we're gonna have to address the elephant in the room with how quickly it's accumulating on utility, whether it's COVID relief funds or not, we're gonna have to address that. Um do we want to do another iteration of small business grants, because that'll be the simplest way to do it here at the end of the year? And then come together to figure out how we're going to address the utility deal at a different time? Or do you want to do a mixture of the two? But I'm looking, I'm looking for direction. It looks like I got thumbs up for the first one, that return to the committee with small business grants and allow that committee to decipher through what the criteria and the amounts and everything are going to be of the grants. Is that, is that a consensus of everybody? All right.
Can I ask clarifying questions before we close out, Mayor?
Of course.
Uh would we like to use the same committee that was previously established for ease of continuing this? And avoiding the topic at the next council meeting, or do you want to revisit that again?
Yeah, so I see councillor Peachill shaking his head, but how quickly he forgets. Uh I remember the parks and the planning commission uh conversation from the last meeting. So we're gonna go and keep that same work group. I think that'd be a great work group.
The, the training is already there.
I, I just wanted to say that um because of the people on the committee, that, that they may as well, they may have yeah, we can talk through that.
Okay, uh councillor Lee.
Yes, I was wondering if there was some way in addition to the business grants, if we could give some pieces of money to the charities in town who are helping people, like Helping Hands and Action Center and Ant Farm, maybe give them each ten thousand or five thousand or just some money that they would be able to pass on to needy people.
I'm just trying to think through that one, because I feel like you, you tell me, Tyler, don't you have to show a COVID-related loss of some kind to get the funds? Um or could we partner with an organization on distribution?
So in theory, it's supposed to be, you know, intended for um dealing with the impact of COVID nineteen. So if, for example, one of our local charities is seeing, you know, a higher higher need because of the pandemic, but they're also not seeing as many donations because people aren't at work, I think you could make the argument that there is a, a, an impact related to the pandemic. I think that just a blanket grant without some sort of documentation is maybe a little more risky. Without having some, you know, criteria behind it, but we can work through that for sure and get a little more um information.
I think they should apply.
To make an application and a request.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I was, I was just, I was just, I was just gonna say, why don't we just keep, keep that in the committee's hands and then leave it up to, you know, small business or organization grant program and see what comes in.
And then my final question, I know we're at seven o'clock. Would you like us to tweak that grant program just slightly so that uh landlords or, or property owners um who run a business such as a rental are included, or would you like, I, I don't have the previous program in front of me, so I'm not sure if they were included in the first round or not, but if they're not, would you like that to be a component?
Sure, yeah, yeah, include it, and then we'll leave it to the committee.
Okay.
And one of the restrictions we had in the first round, because of some of that, they were not included or possibly not included because of how much money was available under the urban renewal district. So this could include some of those that aren't in the district, because it's not coming from that funding mechanism.
I have seen in my research um some language related to if you previously received a coronavirus, uh you know, small business interruption grant that you're not eligible for the second round. Is that something the council's sort of interested in also following, or just let's get as many applications as we can, let the committee hash that out on their own?
I, I think get as many apps as we can and let the committee sort that out.
I, I agree, because you never know where we're going to be putting the most effective dollars.
Yeah.
I, I don't like, I don't like to tie hands, let's just, yeah.
Perfect, just trying to get as many of these little questions uh
No, thank you.
Buttoned up before uh we move on. I don't want to have to spend a whole meeting talking about next steps and then be two weeks out from actually implementing, so.
Okay, perfect. So with that, I'll go ahead and close out this work session. And then unless there's objection, everyone cool with me just starting the council meeting at this time without a recess? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. Uh please, uh join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. I just stand in the state of America. In the republic. One nation, nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty, justice for all.
All right, thank you. Uh with that, Jeff, we call the roll.
Councillor Peachill.
Here.
Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Hamblin.
Here.
Councillor Lee.
Here.
Councillor Exner.
Here.
Councillor Schultz.
Yeah.
Mayor Polian.
Here. Well, welcome everyone to tonight's Sandy City Council meeting. Uh per normal, I'll go ahead and start with a quick review of this evening's agenda. Uh we will first go to any changes to the agenda, we'll then go to public comment. Uh the council will welcome any comments at that time that you wish to offer to the council. Uh we'll then move on to the consent agenda, and then we'll uh move on to new business, which has a CMGC contract for the collection system rehabilitation project. We'll then have a report from Jordan Wheeler's or city manager, we'll go to committee and councillor reports, and then we'll adjourn for this evening, a reminder to council that we do have an executive session at the conclusion of tonight's regular uh meeting. Uh with that, are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, and we will move forward to public uh comment. Council welcomes your comments at this time. Uh there are instructions on the agenda, but if you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Just a reminder that you'll have three minutes for public comment, and to remember to state your name and address for the record, please. With that, Jeff, do we have any public comment this evening?
Okay, Mayor, I'll just take a look at the list. And I do not see any raised hands.
All right, thank you for that, Jeff. And with that, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Unless there's council discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Now, second.
There's a motion by councillor Hamblin and a second by councillor Exner to adopt tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide a thumbs up. A, a nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to new business or CMGC contract for the collection system rehabilitation project. I'm guessing that you, Mr. Walker? Or Jordan, do you have an introduction?
I'll let Mike do his own introduction tonight, so Mike Walker's going to give the presentation on this contract. Public works director, thanks.
Yeah, you know, staying in the staff report, we solicited proposals at the end of August. Uh they were due in early September, but we extended the deadline for a week because of the fires, several contractors, several proposers requested that. And then we evaluated the proposals and uh shortlisted two contractors, invited them back for interviews. Uh after the interviews, we reranked the um top two firms and then came up with a recommendation to award. But uh as you'll notice in the recommendation, it was subject to the resolution of any protests. We did perceive a protest today about ten AM and um based on discussions with David. Uh I think the recommendation is going to be that we uh hold off on the award until the first meeting in November. Now, David, do you want to kind of weigh in on this?
Yeah, sure, Mike. Uh everybody hear me okay? Uh so, yeah, I, I haven't had a chance. I got it this afternoon. Mike shot it over to me. Um the, the best thing to do at this point is to resolve that first. Uh and the way that uh Sandy, uh most of our clients deal with protests is that that's done at the staff level. Um the initial look uh that I took at it, um it, it doesn't seem like it has much merit in so far as they weren't really in line, like next in line. Mike, you can clarify that if I'm wrong about that, but to, to receive, would have been considered to receive the, the contract, so um I don't want to prejudge it. Uh want to look at it, of course, and respond to it appropriately, but we'll do that in the next few days, and then we would uh bring back a recommendation if it's the same one, the council would see this at its next meeting, uh and with the same recommendation for award.
All right, so I'm just pushing the pause button now.
Yep.
All right, pause. Should we move on? Okay, let's move on. Jordan, you're up. City manager report.
Not a lot tonight, uh council, just a couple of things. We did submit our uh application for the WFIU loan uh last week. Um and I think I, I sent the executive summary uh to the council um on Friday or Saturday. Uh so you have that. Um I just wanted to thank the team um the, for putting together that letter of interest. I think it, we learned a lot from last year's effort, um both through the interviews with uh the federal um staff, but also uh hiring on some consultants that've been successful at the program before. Um and so it was helpful to have their expertise in putting this together. And also allowed us the opportunity to update our rate model and our financial plan uh for the sewer system improvements, um which we'll be bringing back to the council uh in the future to review with you. Uh but I, I think we have a pretty strong case, fingers are crossed uh for this uh letter of interest. Of course, um the next step would be um being invited to submit for an application, which is uh pretty much the um acknowledgement that we'd be accepted for the program, so that's going to take a few months. But thanks to Mike and, and the team for, for submitting that. Um and then the Parks Master Plan Open House, I think maybe uh councillors will mention this too, but um the virtual open house was extended to October twenty-fifth. Uh looking to get a little more participation in that, so if you're tuning in and haven't had the chance, uh please sign on to the virtual open house. It does take a minute to load, but once it does, there's a lot of information in there. Um and a lot of good opportunities to um comment on the draft plan and um where proposed future parks would go and trails, and also um uh your reflections on some proposed concepts for uh new parks. So um I, I think it's a very well done uh for uh having to do these things virtually, so um encouraging people to participate in that. Um and then, that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Awesome, thank you, Jordan. Great report. Uh councillor Schultz.
No report for me.
Thank you councillor, councillor Exner. Councillor Exner, you're muted. I muted you.
Yeah, well, whatever. Uh a couple of things, uh one is uh I did myself look at the Parks Master Plan online, and you're right, it took several minutes to get it up and running, and I thought it was a pretty strong uh internet connection where I'm at. I'm pretty close to, to Jeremy, so I know he has that special uh access to it, and so sometimes that bleeds over into me and I get a, a lot of energy there, so.
It's just a big file, so it takes your computer a long time to store it. It came really fast.
Okay, I was very impressed. There's a lot of good things in there. I also saw some things that I thought could be really upgraded. So I encourage anybody that has anything to do with, any interest at all with our parks and trails, please take a look at that and take advantage of this extension. Really, I want to move to the next, really happy with what we did out on Roslyn Lake this past Friday. It was really well attended by a mix of folks. And I know that Jordan and Mike did a lot of effort to put it together and get it right. And also Murray Smith, thanks for their good process and, and showing us and distributing it to all the different folks that were there. And also thanks to Representative Anna Williams about being able to attend and asking lots of questions. We look forward to if she gets elected, helping us out. And I hope that happens a bunch. And one last thing, looks like we're going to hold on any more meetings for the Art Commission for the rest of the year until we get a chance to have the council look at filling some of those, such a large number of seats that are empty and add to the Christmas and Thanksgiving timeframe. It looks like that's probably really appropriate until the council gets a chance to relook at those seats and such. So there won't be many meetings or any at all till after that gets put together. So, and with that, I am done.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lee.
Yeah, I was interested in growth projections because there's been so much discussion about it. And I pulled figures from PSU and some other places. And looking at the last year, we only had 1.93% of growth. And even less than that the two years prior. But to put it in perspective, if you go back to when Mayor King was leading the council in 2016, the growth was about doubled. And if you go back to when Mayor Malone was here in 2010, it was actually tripled what it is now. So some of those big growth spurts didn't happen currently. And it's been a while since that occurred. In fact, in 2010, we had 4,200 new residents just in one year, which was astronomical. The other thing I was interested in at the PGE breakfast, part of the LOC conference, they talked about hydro power and pipelines. And I'd like to see us look at that as we go forward with both wastewater and drinking water. Because what you can do is actually take a piece of the pipeline and replace it. I don't know if you can see this, probably not very well. But you replace it with the pipe that has generation already in it. But that has to be done in the specs before the design is completed. So hopefully we can address that. Energy Trust of Oregon, In-Pipe Energy and PGE have gone together to develop a program with funding for feasibility and funding for the project. So I think that could be a real benefit to us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that. Counselor Hamblin.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smallwood.
I had a parks meeting last Wednesday, passed on the code of conduct. They had some questions. I think all of that was answered. And hopefully they'll be getting those signed this week. I think they were sent out to each of them. And I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pete Sol.
Yeah, we had a Economic Development Committee meeting here a couple of weeks ago, and it went well. Talked a lot about the urban renewal district and ideas and prioritizations, some of those things that could come up just to get them thinking about that. We also talked about the 362nd Bell Street Extension and possibilities of that going in and what that would look like a little bit, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Well, for my report, just wanted to first off, thank Counselor Exner and staff, Jordan and Mike Walker and your teams for last week with Representative Anna Williams. You know, I don't know if counselors like this or not, you know, it's a public servant's dream for their legacy to be a wastewater treatment plant. But this will be this council's legacy. And, and it's a good one, quite honestly. You know, you, I think back to the, to the problem that we were all kind of posed with here a year and a half ago and the outreach we did to the watershed councils and the idea that came up, you know, what about Roslyn Lake and that area? And, you know, three or four people getting to that map there behind the rostrum and looking at it and thinking of ideas to this council, going to the legislature and getting that $500,000 for the green alternative analysis. I mean, as we stand there and we talk to the folks from trackers that do incredible youth education programs with nature and the environment, to with Representative Williams. And we really start thinking through, does the tourism, economic vitality, what's good for the environment, engaging our youth in education programs? I mean, this is really what, what it's all about, right? It's, it's finding a problem and then coming out on the other end in a much more positive situation than you would have ever dreamed imaginable. So thank you to everyone for council, for your leadership, staff, for all of your work and leadership in this. Just been a real community effort that I know as, as mayor, I'm, I'm really proud of. And I never thought I'd be proud of a wastewater treatment legacy. But I think we all will have something to really kind of hang our hats on, really proud of it. And then just final note, trick or treat trail that the Chamber of Commerce puts on, obviously, in a COVID world, will be Saturday, the 24th. You've got to schedule your time, which actually can be kind of cool. My family did a scheduled time at the pumpkin patch this weekend that worked out really well. From four to seven, you stay, you remain in your car. You'll be able to decorate your car and Halloween type stuff afterwards if you choose to. But it really should be a great community event. So that's Saturday from, from four to seven. With that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this evening's city council meeting. Remember, counselors, to remain on for our executive session that will happen at the conclusion of this. I will now, I'm not calling it to order, I will now close the city council meeting.